From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome back to our afternoon session of January 9th, 2024. Board to reconvene. The first item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. The next item is a report on actions taken in closed session. But before that, I'd like to make an announcement. That is that today in closed session regarding item 49 on this morning's agenda, I am pleased to report by unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors appointed Allison Burrows as our next Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services effective January 13, 2024. Ms. Burrows has led our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department as the interim director since October 14th of last year. Ms. Burrows is a licensed clinical social worker who graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology and English from Massey University in New Zealand and received a Master of Arts degree in sociology and social work from CSU Bakersfield. She began her career with Kern County in 2002 as a mental health recovery specialist and subsequently served in numerous supervisory and leadership positions, including deputy director for the last six years, where she managed numerous operational divisions at Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. She also serves as an adjunct faculty member at the CSU Bakersfield Social Work Graduate Program. She has a background, experience, and resolve required for this important leadership position. The Board is looking forward to continuing its work with Ms. Burrows as the permanent director, and we would like to give you an opportunity to say a few words. There you are. And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman Couch, members of the board. It is such an honor. I wanted to just express my gratitude for the appointment, and I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to work with you and the community to meet the important needs of behavioral health in Kern County. It is such a privilege over the last three months to serve as interim, and I'm just looking forward to the future and working with you all.
We didn't take lightly your appointment, and you had stiff competition, but you did an excellent job, and you deserve the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Now, we'll go to our county council for a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. In addition to item 49, which is the appointment of Ms. Burrows, you also heard items 51 and 54. There is no reportable action. Items 50, 52, and 53, your board continued the closed session to reconvene or meet again after this afternoon's open session. So you will hear those matters this afternoon.
Thank you. The next item, or next on the agenda, is the consent agenda. All items with a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The C represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors. The C represents a consent agenda for the Kern County Sanitation Authority and/or the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and/or the IHSS Authority, excuse me, public authority. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by all in one motion. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Let me tell you what those items are. You may know, but I need to tell you anyway. They start on page two of the afternoon agenda, items three and four. Page three, items five through eight. Page four, items nine through 13. Page five, items 14 through 21. Page six, items 22 through 28. Page seven, items 29 through 36, although item 36 has been withdrawn and will not be considered, withdrawn by the department. Page eight, items 37 through 43, and I need to, 43 is I need to read into the record. The item 43 has been withdrawn and will not be considered. Page nine, items 44 through 51, and I believe also on item nine, there is a correction. The item where it says fiscal impact, and on the agenda it reads $8,313.90, that should read $8,283.50. Now, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment on any items on the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Isaac. I believe I'm from District Three. My main concern is with item 47. When the anti-camping ordinance was first enacted, I had made a comment then as well. One of my minor concerns about the punishments for camping was addressed in favor of ignoring my main points. I only heard about this revision yesterday. I believe that voting on this should be delayed at the very least so more members of the public can weigh in on it. I strongly oppose the revisions. I understand that the language is being changed so that the illegality of any encampments is not dependent on the availability of any shelter, and I think members of the public, many people that I know, would be strongly opposed to that. Many of our shelters have very long wait lists already. Where are these people supposed to go if they're not, if it's just completely illegal for them to camp regardless of the shelter that is available? I've lost my train of thought. My apologies. Well, yeah, please don't further marginalize the growing population of people without the means to live a decent life. This problem is only going to get worse, and I think that this is only a Band-Aid solution. This is not going to fix any of the issues. I left work to come here and make this comment today. I'm going to be heading back shortly. I hope that you consider my words and that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac.
Good afternoon, board members and staff. I'm
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome back to our afternoon session of January 9th, 2024, Board to reconvene. The first item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. The next item is a report on actions taken in closed session, but before that, I'd like to make an announcement. That is that today in closed session regarding item 49 on this morning's agenda, I am pleased to report by unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors appointed Allison Burrows as our next Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services effective January 13, 2024. Ms. Burrows has led our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department as the interim director since October 14th of last year. Ms. Burrows is a licensed clinical social worker who graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology and English from Massey University in New Zealand and received a Master of Arts degree in sociology and social work from CSU Bakersfield. She began her career with Kern County in 2002 as a mental health recovery specialist and subsequently served in numerous supervisory, excuse me, supervisory and leadership positions, including deputy director for the last six years, where she managed numerous operational divisions at Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. She also serves as an adjunct faculty member at the CSU Bakersfield Social Work Graduate Program. She has a background, experience, and resolve required for this important leadership position. The Board is looking forward to continuing its work with Ms. Burrows as the permanent director, and we would like to give you an opportunity to say a few words. There you are. And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman Couch, members of the Board. It is such an honor. I wanted to just express my gratitude for the appointment, and I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to work with you and the community to meet the important needs of behavioral health in Kern County. It is such a privilege over the last three months to serve as interim, and I'm just looking forward to the future and working with you all.
We didn't take lightly your appointment, and you had stiff competition, but you did an excellent job, and you deserve the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Now, we'll go to our county council for a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Board. In addition to item 49, which is the appointment of Ms. Burrows, you also heard items 51 and 54. There is no reportable action. Items 50, 52, and 53, your board continued the closed session to reconvene or meet again after this afternoon's open session. So we will, you will hear those matters this afternoon.
Thank you. The next item, or next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items with a C-A or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The C represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors. The C represents a consent agenda for the Kern County Sanitation Authority and/or the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and/or the IHSS authority, excuse me, public authority. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by all in one motion. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Let me tell you what those items are. You may know, but I need to tell you anyway. They start on page two of the afternoon agenda, items three and four. Page three, items five through eight. Page four, items nine through 13. Page five, items 14 through 21. Page six, items 22 through 28. Page seven, items 29 through 36, although item 36 has been withdrawn and will not be considered, withdrawn by the department. Page eight, items 37 through 43, and I need to, 43 is I need to read into the record. The item 43 has been withdrawn and will not be considered. Page nine, items 44 through 51, and I believe also on item nine, there is a correction. The item where it says fiscal impact, and on the agenda it reads $8,313.90, that should read $8,283.50. Now, is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any items on the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Isaac. I believe I'm from District Three. My main concern is with item 47. When the anti-camping ordinance was first enacted, I had made a comment then as well. One of my minor concerns about the punishments for camping was addressed in favor of ignoring my main points. I only heard about this revision yesterday. I believe that voting on this should be delayed, at the very least, so more members of the public can weigh in on it. I strongly oppose the revisions. I understand that the language is being changed so that the illegality of any encampments is not dependent on the availability of any shelter, and I think members of the public, many people that I know, would be strongly opposed to that. Many of our shelters have very long wait lists already. Where are these people supposed to go if they're not, if it's just completely illegal for them to camp regardless of the shelter that is available? I've lost my train of thought. Well, yeah, please don't further marginalize the growing population of people without the means to live a decent life. This problem is only going to get worse, and I think that this is only a Band-Aid solution. This is not going to fix any of the issues. I left work to come here and make this comment today. I'm going to be heading back shortly. I hope that you consider my words and that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac.
Good afternoon, Board members and staff. I'm speaking on behalf of Consent Agenda Item Number Four. My name is George Torres, and I'm a member of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. I live, work, and recreate in this renowned county of Kern. There is one thing I'm not too fond about when it comes to Kern County, and that is the poor air quality. I'm speaking facts when I say that Kern County has been ranked at the very top with some of the worst air quality in the United States. According to the American Lung Association State Air Report, the worst cities for air quality in the USA are measured by ozone pollution, short-term particle pollution, and year-round particle pollution. Based on an average of these measurements, Bakersfield and Kern County are ranked number one. I strongly believe that not only myself and my family, but all of Kern County will be affected by the environmental impacts of this project. This Board has the ability to do the right thing for Kern County and all of its constituents by requiring an enforceable commitment for local higher workforce to help reduce gas emissions into our environment, pay a sustainable livable wage that will help bring economic stability to the area, and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship program when constructing or maintaining structures that would operate under the requested conditional use permit. I ask the Board to continue this item to another time until such concerns can be properly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Any other comments today on the consent agenda? We'll wait. If there are others that would like to speak to the consent agenda, could I get you to come down to the front so we don't have any way in between speakers? Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sandra Placencia. That's S-A-N-D-R-A-P-L-A-S-C-E-N-C-I-A. And I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council. So Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability works alongside many residents in the county who are at risk of entering into homelessness. Housing is a pressing issue within the state, and Kern County is no exception to seeing the consequences of an unstable rental market and lack of tenant protection causes. Kern County Superior Court data shows steady increase in eviction filings, meaning more residents are at risk of homelessness. Instead of proactively passing ordinances that strengthen tenant protections and keep tenants housed, the county is doubling down on criminalizing homelessness. There are many discrepancies and gaps within the amendments proposed for the anti-camping ordinance. For example, the ordinance states it will prohibit camping at all times where such activity poses an immediate threat or unreasonable risk to harm any person, but the ordinance fails to define what will qualify as an immediate threat or unreasonable risk. The lack of clear language will legally permit further criminalization of homeless individuals. The ordinance also states that personal belongings will be stored for 90 days after sweeps, and folks can go to the M Street Navigation Center or call a phone number to retrieve their items. The system is flawed in such that homeless folks do not have access to a vehicle or reliable transportation, or sometimes don't have access to a cellphone. The county must ensure that before items are taken or trashed, individuals have access to at least know how to retrieve their items or keep them. Lastly, we want to highlight that under Government Code 65583 subdivision A7, the housing element identifies homeless individuals as special populations. The county has an obligation to ensure housing for all segments of the community, including those who are unhoused. As the county updates their housing elements, they must focus on allocating resources to ensure there's adequate shelter, transitional housing, and permanent housing for residents facing housing insecurity, rather than utilizing county resources for the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. We urge the county to include a Right to Counsel ordinance, Rent Control and Just Cause ordinance, Inclusionary Zoning ordinance, and speak to special populations to identify programs that will benefit the community. We urge the County Board of Supervisors to reject the amendments and overturn the ordinance and focus on meeting the needs of homeless individuals as well. The purpose of this ordinance is to set standards for the preservation and protection of human life by ensuring homeless, by ensuring folks experiencing homelessness cannot camp, sit down, lie down, or set their personal belongings on the streets. Are homeless individuals not also human? Do their lives not deserve to be protected and preserved? Thank you.
Ms. Placencia, thank you for your comments. Who'll be next?
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Rosa Lopez, and I'm a long-term resident of the county of Kern, specifically District Three. I'm concerned and disappointed, and I support everything that the previous speakers spoke regarding item number 47. I'm disappointed that the Board's decision to consider the proposed language to change the ordinance to further strengthen access to public spaces for people who are experiencing homelessness. This amendment to Chapter 8.3, Title 8, Camping and Placing Personal Effects in Public Spaces, I mean, it's the new year. We just celebrated the holiday with our families and communities, and I had hoped my elected leaders would be inspired to tackle complex and challenging issues with a positive foot. But instead, we are continuing to further tighten language to criminalize already a very vulnerable population. We expect you to do better for all of our residents, including and especially our unhoused neighbors. I don't pretend to know the answer or a quick solution to our growing houseless population, but I know that pushing folks outside of public spaces and further criminalizing it is not it. Kern has continued to experience increased numbers of unhoused people from 855 in 2018 to over 1,600 in 2022. I see them every day, and I'm working with a handful to connect them with services. But essentially, what they need is permanent housing, and that is where we should be prioritizing our time and our funding and not investing in arresting and citing people who are barely making it every day. But instead, the Board is considering this harmful ordinance amendment that will further push them out into public spaces and potentially cite them or arrest them for simply trying to survive. I urge the Board to reject the proposed ordinance amendment and instead to wreck the county staff to build on the efforts to end homelessness by 2028. I mean, that is our goal, right? And prioritizing housing-first approach that will put people in homes and connect them to the services they need to get off the streets and not simply push them out into rural communities, as we've seen in our rural communities.
Ms. Lopez, can I ask you to bring your comments to a close?
Yes. So I just urge the Kern County to continue building on the effort to really address the root cause of homelessness and not simply tighten the ordinance to cite them and arrest them. Thank you.
Greetings, Kern Board, sorry. Greetings, Kern County Board of Supervisors. My name is Valerie Pinto, and I'm Civic Engagement Coordinator at the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I'm making a public comment on behalf of the Dolores Huerta Foundation regarding the proposed ordinance, Chapter 830, Title 8, to the Kern County Ordinance Code, the ordinance, as I will continuously reference throughout my public comment.
Can you spell your last name for us?
Yes. P-I-N-T-O, like the bean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Although the purpose, the ordinance, is to set standards for the preservation of and protection of public areas, open spaces, and facilities within the county limits for the intended purposes, and although the ordinance has been tailored to the specific needs of Kern County, and although this ordinance will add special enforcement zones, specify prohibited acts, and update property removal procedures, these all seem like good ideas in an ideal world. In reality, this proposed ordinance change is counterproductive to ending an ever-growing and overwhelming houseless issue in Kern County. Pardon, just as a side note, I do intentionally say "houseless." Some of these individuals consist of families reverting to calling the park, motel, or rental car their home. I had a close friend who grew up houseless, and I can proudly say she's a UC Merced Mechanical Engineering alumni, thanks to our higher education programs and resources we sought together. But I digress. This proposed ordinance change is counterproductive to ending an ever-growing and overwhelming houselessness issue in Kern County, continued to lead to more citations and arrests, burdening already bogged-down courts and jail facilities, and ultimately is a waste of taxpayer dollars which can be put to better use by enforcing proven solutions recommended by the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. Why, you may ask? Whereas Kern County has not developed enough affordable housing to keep pace with its growing population, according to the California Housing Partnership, Kern County needed about 30,000 additional affordable housing units in 2015 to meet the needs of its extremely low-income and very low-income renter. And whereas since passing the ordinance in November 2021, the county has spent millions of dollars enforcing a failed ordinance. And whereas since 2018, the number of unhoused people has continued to increase from 855 in 2018 to 1,603 in 2022. Now is the time to act, and we strongly urge the Board to reject the ordinance amending Chapter 830, Title 8, to the Kern County Ordinance Code, and instead committing to working with service providers promptly and quick with the training.
Ms. Pinto, could I ask you to bring your comments to a close? We try to stay to two minutes.
Yes. Yeah, so basically just, you know, finding real and proven solution-based approach to addressing holistic well-being of the communities. We all are responsible to serve as civil servants.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Lise Calderon, L-I-Z-E-C-A-L-D-E-R-O-N, policy advocate with ACOV Southern California. I was inspired by my colleagues to come up here and share a personal story. Before the holidays, I was on my way to Southern California, to Los Angeles, to visit family, and I made a stop to get gas, a very casual stop, and this was right on the outskirts of Kern County. And I, my partner and I saw a unhoused member, an unhoused person that was trying or just keeping themselves warm with cardboard. They were sitting at a gas station, and they were very much keeping to themselves. There was no one around them. And I approached them and asked them if they needed help, asked them how I could connect them to resources, immediately went to search on my phone, connected with Flood Ministries, and kept in contact with Flood Ministry so that they can go out to this very isolated area outside and on the borderlines of Kern County and help this resident. And I can say that that helped them 1,000% more than pushing them into a different area, asking them to find a different space to sit at. So what I wanted to come on here and share is just ask for time to connect with direct service providers, with organizations that are doing this work, and ask them how that can be strengthened. Putting up a sign saying you can't sit here, you can't stay here is not helpful. They will move, find somewhere to move on to else, but I've lived in various cities in the Central Valley, and the same issue persists and pertains. As someone who is a survivor of domestic violence, this, there are many reasons that someone can end up unhoused and houseless, and my family and I were on the verge of doing so. And so I have a deep understanding for the reasons that folks may be out there are not because they're all of the reasons that just put a blame on them and their situation, but because of the help that needs to be extended. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other comments on the consent agenda, I'll return it to the Board.
Motion on consent?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
Supervisor Perez, can you reconfirm your vote? Oh, there it did. Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
That brings us back to page two of the afternoon agenda, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any item that is not on our agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the Board. I could tell you a whole lot more, but let's just get started.
Hey, Paul Lindfeste. I reside in District Three. I wanted to say, I was here this morning, but I had a doctor's appointment at 11:00, so I had to leave before a public comment. But I wanted to thank Jeff Flores for his patience and his, how he handled himself. It was a very difficult thing, as he mentioned last year with some of the meetings, but you really showed even-hattness in how you treated people with respect when they came up to the microphone. I want to say how appreciative I was of that. Sometimes I disagree with other speakers, and that's okay, because we all have the right to come up and express ourselves during the meeting, and thank you very much for that. Also, for Amy Espinoza, I've been reading about all of the things, and I've been listening to the meetings as well, of all the changes that are happening, and I think they're really pushing for transparency over a lot, and I really appreciate, I think she's, at least what I think, has answered a lot of the questions that people have had. I do say that I was listening to the show, I mean, I don't call this a show, I shouldn't call this a show, but sometimes it is, but to the comments while I was waiting in the lobby of my doctor's appointment office. And I keep hearing the same thing over and over again, which is sometimes why I come here and say what I have to say over and over again. But some of the problems seem to be a misunderstanding of what the Kern County results actually were back in 2020. Obviously, the, this Board and the Elections Office can only deal with what happened inside the county, not what happened nationwide. And in the county, the results were very clear that Donald Trump actually won the election by 30,000 votes, give or take a few hundred. And also that, it surprised me, I've said it before, I'm a Democrat, but I expect the Republican to win the Republican Party because I live in a county, because we have so many more things going on in the party than just an election that happens every two years. So, oops. That's all I had to say, is that there's really nothing to investigate as far as I can say, because votes obviously weren't being flipped in Kern County for someone else that the public don't want. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lindfeste.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara, B-A-R, B-A-R-A, Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N. I'm in District Two. I live at 8609 Woodland Lane, which is 67th West off Bacchus Road in Mojave. I also own a home next door, 8481, directly across from Halfway Home Dog Rescue operated by Suzanne Poth. I am here today to talk to you about an ongoing issue of dog noise that exceeds acceptable levels for unacceptable durations, often existing four to five hours. When I moved to 8481 over 22 years ago, the property across the street was unoccupied. Residence approximately three years later, it was purchased by Suzanne Poth and developed into a dog rescue called Halfway to Home. We received notification of this and proceeded to follow the process of development and wrote letters and attended many meetings and voiced our concerns, mainly about dogs allowed and potential dog issues, even though I do not know today the exact number of the dogs that reside there. When expansion plans were presented, we received notification again, as well, and wrote letters and attended meetings expressing potential and existing concerns relative to dog noise. On two different occasions, Suzanne approached me and said that if I was ever thinking of selling, that she would be interested, and I stated then, and I'll state now, that my property is not for sale. I was informed about six to eight years ago that she had purchased properties at the corner of 70th Street West off Bacchus Road. One was directly opposite my son's property at 6950 Bacchus Road. This was formerly a residence, and we had never received any, and I'll repeat, any notification that it would become a dog rescue. We noticed that dogs arrived, and it was, in fact, a dog rescue. It seemed, at least for two years, that different people were managing it, and we received lots of noise from these dogs, and it seemed like it escalated to what seemed more and more added continually.
Ms. Hoffman?
Then several years ago.
Ms. Hoffman?
Yes. I will.
No, hang on one second. You're about 15 minutes, 15 seconds over.
Yeah, and then several years ago.
Hang on. I'm trying to help you out.
Yes, I know, I'm closing.
No, I'm trying to help you out. I think you want to talk to one of these gentlemen over here in code compliance?
Well.
About the issue that you're having?
Yeah, but we're presenting everything to you because we do think that, you know, we live in this district and that the opportunity for our government should be taking action, and I put "to visit," and I put "to look at" what we're seeing and how it's affecting our quality of life, because we do know that our government says everybody deserves a better life. I agree with it totally, but let me just finish.
The way we take action is we get our staff over here to help you.
This last thing is that all we're asking for here is that the quality of life would look into the noise pollution found by this dog rescue. That's it.
I had a feeling you were going there, but you need to talk about that issue with that gentleman right there. Can you raise your hand now?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thanks for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Then you can do that right now, I believe. Any other comments on the consent? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. This is where I'm public, public presentations. No more of them. I'm, well, I was gonna, I thought Amy was under Board Member Announcements.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
I'm not that tall. Charles Shin.
I'm not that tall. Charles Shin, S-H-I-N-N. I wanted to thank Mr. Zervis for meeting with us after the AM session and coming to a workable agreement. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Seeing, sir, are you public, here for public presentations?
Yes, sir.
Please come on. Are there others that would like to speak? If so, I need you to come down to the front row so we can get you the microphone quickly. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is John Riddle. I live in Boron, California. We keep getting these notices about the code compliance on our place down there and where our place is. And then we've had some, the code compliance come and remove things from our place. There were family heirlooms, and we were, we were under the compliance of our fence and our yard and hauling our stuff to the dump and everything. And he keeps sending these deals to us for $9,000, which we're not going to pay because we were assaulted during the, as they were stealing our stuff, they assaulted us and broke our fence down. And I have witnesses from the hardware store right there, and the mayor of the town seen the, seen the whole thing. And you guys are telling me that we owe you money, and you come down there, down there and take our stuff and, and say our yard is messed up. And so, you guys called us up here for a hearing. I was just wanting to come here. I already made a complaint and filed a suit for the code compliance, people that came down there with the tow trucks and took our stuff.
Was your, did you have an item on the consent agenda today?
Yeah, there was a hearing today.
Well, we just had the hearing. Which item number are you?
I have this paper here. There's a say an item number on it.
Let me ask the clerk if she can take a look at what you've got. That was item eight on our agenda. It was a consent item, so it was voted on and approved all in one action with several, many, many other items. We need to reopen that public hearing if we're going to have any other hearings on it, but I need, I need the board to do that. That's not up to me. So, that's already been acted on. I would suggest you talk to, I don't have any other supervisors punching in, I would suggest you talk to the same individual that I directed the previous speaker to talk to, Al Rojas.
Chairman, Chairman Couch, if Rojas is, looks like he's still out, speaking to the other constituent, we do have our Public Works Director, Mr. Chaplin, that's here.
Is that him right there? Okay.
Yeah, that Mr. Rojas reports to. If you can have a quick conversation with him, Mr. Chaplin, and then we'll determine if we need to reopen that hearing based on, based on your conversation. Yes, please come forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Because of how this happened, it would be my recommendation, we can speak, I can speak with the, the member of the public here. I think we can proceed with what happened today, and we have discretion at the department, so we can bring this back before your board, I believe, if, if things change. So that's kind of the route I'd like to go. And maybe we can come to a compromise through discussions before we go.
You were able to, you were able to speak to him today because he's here today?
Yeah, no, definitely. I'll speak with him today.
It sounds, it sounds like, Madam Clerk, it sounds like staff would be able to bring that back to us based on their, their conversation, if there's, if there's an issue. Mr. Chaplin, you're, you feel confident you can handle it that way?
Correct. Yes, we can do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are there any other public presentations? That's item one. Item two is the board member, our board member announcements and reports. Seeing none here, I would like to ask Ms. Espinoza, who is our Auditor Controller, to come forward and give you some time. I know you were, you intended to be here this morning, but you were needed upstairs at 9:30, and you weren't able to stay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Couch, members of the board, Amy Espinoza, the Kern County Auditor Controller, County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. Before, I was going to provide your board with an update on, on the projects that we have going on right now in preparation for the March 5th primary, as well as some information on the special election that the governor called yesterday. But I do want to start, because I don't want it to get lost, to just address the comments this morning particularly related to the NVRA, the National Voter Registration Act. And I do want to let your board and the public know that we are, as soon as we were made aware of the, the issues that Judicial Watch found, we started working on this and we're working through this as quickly as we can. I do want to make it clear that everyone who is slated on a list to be canceled, they're made inactive, which means they are not sent a ballot. And so I just want to make sure that everyone doesn't have an idea that people on this list to be deleted are still receiving ballots. So that being said, are there any questions on that, first of all, before I get into my update?
I don't see any.
Okay. So, this, this afternoon, I just want to provide your board and the public with a brief update on the Election Division projects related to the investments you made to enhance the division this year. Before I begin, I also wanted to share with you that I've worked with Bakersfield College, and we will be installing a ballot drop box there, hopefully this week, but maybe next week, but definitely before we start accepting ballots in those drop boxes. General Services will install that drop box, and ITS will be installing a camera there as well. So now we are up to 19 drop boxes in Kern County because we have the recent addition of Cal State just two months ago. So the projects your board invested in are moving forward and are on track to be up and running for the March 5th primary election. The sorter has been installed, and we are working with our vendor to conduct testing. Cabling has been completed for our new live streaming of the ballot processing areas. Equipment is being ordered, and a streamlining platform, a streaming platform has been identified. Once the streaming platform is acquired, we will need to test and train, then this enhancement will be fully functional. All of the equipment we need in order to mirror the signature checking stations has been received and is currently being configured by ITS. The auto, audiovisual system for poll worker training is scheduled to be installed as soon as all of the equipment is received, and I anticipate this being within the next two weeks. Cameras have been installed at nearly all drop boxes except at the Rosemond Library, CSUB, Bakersfield College, and the Brim Hall Fire Station. These will all be installed by the end of January and before ballots go out to the voters. I want to remind the public that the feeds from these cameras will not be streamed online during the March primary election or the special elections. The plan is to have the video feed come back to my office where observers will be able to view it. ITS is working on a solution to make this happen. We are also currently troubleshooting some connectivity issues, and I anticipate these being resolved before the ballot drop boxes are open to receive ballots for the March 5th election. Lastly, the new and improved election website, kernvote.com, went live on December 20th, and we've added a feature that offers visitors to sign up for election updates. Our first newsletter went out yesterday afternoon and featured information on our election enhancements, voter registration, military and overseas voters, poll worker opportunities, our Adopt a Poll program, important election dates, and an announcement of the newly appointed Assistant Registrar of Voters, Laura Cantu. It also includes links to our social media platforms where everyone is encouraged to follow the Kern County Elections Division for information and important reminders. We are hard at work to get all of these projects completed as soon as possible. I also want to take this opportunity to notify you and the public that Governor Newsom has announced a special election to fill the 20th Congressional District seat that was vacated by Kevin McCarthy on December 31st. The special election will consist of a primary election, which is scheduled for March 19th, two weeks after the presidential primary, and a general election, which is scheduled for May 21st. The special election affects approximately 230,000 Kern County voters, which is slightly more than half of all of our registered voters, and spans the county as far east as Ridgecrest, as far south as Lebec, as far west as McKittrick, and as far north as James Road near Meadowsville Del Port. While three elections in a two-month period is quite a feat, my dedicated staff and I will ensure that each one is conducted successfully and accurately. This concludes my update, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Quick question on the streaming. Does that mean people can come in to, you'll have a place in your office where people can come in and view all the drop boxes on a computer or screen or something?
To observe. That's the goal, and that's what we're working towards, yes.
So how would, how would people, how would they observe anything that occurs after 5:00 PM and before 8:00 AM the next day? What would they do there?
Well, we're not, we are not, we're usually not out of the office at 5:00, but I understand what you're saying, in those off-hours.
Yes.
The video is still being recorded, but it would not be available to observe because we're not in the office.
But would they be able to view it the next day? Or would they ever?
The next day would be a live stream.
So, does that mean no? They would never, no one will ever be able to, no person who normally views the streaming would ever be able to view anything that happens at midnight or 2:00 AM?
Correct. Right now, for the March election, yes.
Can we talk, we don't need to do it today, but I'd like to talk to you more about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by board members? Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Appreciate it. I think that takes us over to item 34, which is under the General Services Division of the CAO's Office, Plans, Specifications, and a Notice to Contractors for the Ford City Park Splash Pad in Ford City. Mr. Hill? Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Couch, members of the board. Again, here to briefly present some of the continued good news for improvements in our parks. The item before you is the request to approve the plans and specifications for the Ford City Splash Pad Park Project located in District Two, Supervisor Scrivener's area. So we're glad to, to be spreading the love and getting projects done in all of our districts right now. So, on your screen, this is just sort of a site map, similar, this presentation is similar to what I've done for the other projects. This is just a site map that shows this park. It's relatively, relatively small park. And you can see the splash pad there in the middle, new storage tank and some ADA parking. So this just gives you a visual representation of the site, and this gives you an indication of the, the type of toys that we're going to be installing in and around the splash pad. These, all of these elements will be able to be used when it's not being used as a splash pad. In other words, in the wintertime, there's still amenities that the kids can play on, so we're really excited about that. This is a basic, there, there's two elements to the solicitation, to the bid right now. One is a base bid, which is what will, at a minimum, what we will, what we will build. And you can see the installation of a new splash pad, installation, water recovery and storage system for reuse of irrigation, of the water for irrigation. In other words, we'll reclaim that water after it is used in the splash pad and then use it for irrigation, so we won't be wasting water. Construction of new ADA parking and accessible path of travel. There'll be some site electrical upgrades and modification of the existing irrigation as required for the installation of the new splash pad and storage tank. Now, in the event that, that the project comes in under budget, we're, we're not seeing that as, as the case these days, but in the event that it is, we have alternative bid items that we're going to be including to request bids for these, for these four other items, which are to install a new shade structure, concrete pad, and picnic tables. That will be alternate number one. Alternate number two will be to remove and replace existing play area sand and rubber blocks with safety surfacing. And Play Area A and 2B will be to replace the existing play area sand and rubber blocks with surfacing. And Play Area B, there are two, two-area play areas. And then alternate number three will be to install a new wrought iron fence around the entire park. In the event that we do come in under budget and one of these alternates can be afforded, we will select that and continue with the project, including the alternative items. If the board approves the plans and specifications today, our bid opening will be February 27th. The current construction estimate for the base bid only, again, this doesn't include the alternates, is $900,000. We will then be back to your board to award the contract on March 12th. Because of the water recovery tank and other specialized stuff related to the splash pad, we anticipate a five-month delay for materials. So construction would start in August and complete in November of this year. Again, I'd like to take this opportunity and inform the, the board and the public that there is a place in Adopt a Park program. Again, we're happy to work with any, work meaningfully with any community groups to help keep this and all of our parks in great shape. The Adopt a Park Handbook is available on the Kern County webpage, on the County Parks webpage. And I'd like to take this time additionally to follow up on a question asked by Supervisor Perez. The last time I was here, you asked me if Supervisor Perez through the chair, if, if we had anybody that had signed up for the Adopt a Park program, and we do, and that's the Greenfield Walking Group, and we're happy to have them as a partner. About a month ago, they, they've signed up, and we will support them in any efforts that they care to take, to take care of that park. We do have interest from other, from other organizations as well, but no, nobody else has signed up yet. But, you know, one step at a time.
Certainly.
So it is recommended that your board make the finding this project is category exempt from further environmental review per Section 15301D of the State Secret Guidelines, approve the plans and specifications, authorize the chairman to sign the plans, and authorize General Services to publish the notice to contractor in a newspaper of general circulation pursuant to Public Contract Code, Section 20125. The bid opening date is to be Tuesday, February 27th at 11:00 AM at the General Services Division Office on the third floor at 11:15 Truxton. And that is the end of my prepared comments. I will avail for any questions you may have.
We've got a couple. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chair Couch. I'll be quick. So I know I have someone who has signed up and submitted paperwork for the Val Terrace Park, but I, I don't know what it, how long it takes to get the process going. And we can talk about this offline later, but I don't know how many people has to join in. I mean, I know it's still a developing project, and we're learning and growing, which is exciting. But I know that we have submission by a woman named Jessica, who I know and grew up in the Val Terrace area and is very serious. And so I think she connected with Carl Brewer and has submitted that paperwork. So I think it's moving, you know, I imagine in various stages at different places, but it's catching wind, and that's exciting. So thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrivener?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank staff for bringing this project forward. This is taking a little bit as we've gone through some, several discussions on the project scope. But this is just one more, I think, tremendous deliverable for District Two as far as new park amenities, new upgrades, but also countywide. We just continue, I think, from the momentum that we had last year in delivering more and more projects throughout Kern County that improve the quality of life. Those are areas that unfortunately during difficult budget times were neglected out of necessity, not out of desire. And now I think we're making up for a lot of lost ground in that area. And so I appreciate staff bringing forward items like this that really do improve our neighborhoods at the ground level. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I'll move approval on staff's recommendation.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second.
Second, please cast your votes.
Do you want me to vote for you?
Yes.
Supervisor Flores, you need to reconfirm your vote, please.
Am I pressing it too? Something happened.
The vote is unanimous, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda, seeing no other, other items. Do we need to adjourn to closed session?
Yes.
But we will not be reporting out after closed session until January 23. So we're adjourning to closed session and adjourning until January 23 of this year.
All is settled.
Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.[1689.88]